Just bringing up things on my screen here. There we go. Okay, are we all good to go? Seeing a few nods. Excellent, so I'll call this meeting to order then. Is there any declaration of interest from anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a delegation scheduled for 9:45. We're a little bit early, but Madam Clerk is our delegate. Ready?
He is here. I'm wondering, because there may be others tuning in, if we just go through the consent agenda and then have our delegation present.
That's a good idea, thank you. So item number four, items potentially requiring separate discussion. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I would just like to identify 5G, which is the correspondence from the municipality of West Gray regarding accessible vehicles for the Gray Road 4, Flecherton to Walkerton transit route. I'm only separating this out for the acknowledgement and if I could make a comment at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, that's so noted. Anyone else? Okay.
And we will decide. And Counselor McQueen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, I think you were next. I was wanting to have separate discussion on item J, the correspondence from the Ontario Land Tribunal and Niagara Starman hearing office.
Thank you. And Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. I'd like to separate, just for a quick discussion, the Agriculture Advisory Committee Minutes, and the other one is with regards to the tandem K, the award of two tandem trucks. I have a quick question there as well, but those are my two.
Okay, thank you. I would just, Madam Clerk, just to make clear, I hope I'm right here. Item J, is it item J that we would move into closed session with respect to?
That is correct, sir. We have some closed session items related to that if it was pulled.
Okay, so just to let you know that we'll deal with that item in closed session. Counselor, so ever. You're on mute.
Okay, I'd like to pull item I, which is correspondence from Beaver Creek Farms and Events for Life regarding proposed towers.
Thank you. And is there anyone else? So just to confirm, the items that are pulled are G, J, D, K, and I. Am I correct with that?
I do see Counselor Keveney.
Counselor Keveney?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I would just suggest item B, the Affordable Housing Task Force Minutes, just to get County Council thinking about the request from the committee for the 1% in the budget process.
Okay, so noted. Counselor, so ever, your hand is still up, is that from the previous?
That's from before.
Okay, no problem. All right, I think we have a healthy dose of things that are pulled. We're gonna have some good discussion today. So with that said, then, Madam Clerk, are we ready to have our delegate?
We just need to vote on the remaining items in the consent.
Right, okay. Excellent, so the consent agenda was moved by Counselor Potter and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Anyone opposed, except for the items pulled, of course, and that is carried. Okay, so we are now turning to our delegation, Jim Torrance from the Blue Mountain Rate Payers Association.
There we go. Hang on one sec, okay. Well, thank you for the invitation to address the council. Again, I guess it was about a year ago that we last presented. It's hard to believe it was that long ago, but here today on behalf of the Blue Mountain Rate Payers Association, to provide another deputation, the previous one focused a lot on the theme of the need to capture government efficiencies, and I think that it's even more pressing, given the impact of COVID on all levels of government finances over the past year. And so, as I say, this deputation will focus on the issue of government efficiencies and fiscal prudence, and I will just walk you through the presentation, which I think has been shared with you already. Let me just go to full screen here, okay. So let me go to the, as it relates to the discussion of approaching finding service efficiencies, we reviewed some of the Gray County strategic documents, and we're heartened to see that the county's incorporated service excellence in its corporate strategic plan. The supporting elements and enabling strategic initiatives all seem very positive, and in particular, we thought investigating cooperative service models, planning for the impacts of provincial downloading, collaboration across municipalities, and comprehensive asset management plans will be important to the success of these initiatives. And we provided and saw the potential for improved service delivery efficiencies in the communication that we provided to County Council in November 25th, as it related to the efforts we understand are underway to develop a framework for evaluating new shared service models. Hang on one second. I stated, we know that work is underway to create a new shared service model, and we also recognize that it will be required to apply a very disciplined and rigorous approach, given the complexity of these types of initiatives. And based on what is in Gray's current analytical framework, there are a few points we wanted to comment on regarding critical success factors. The first relates to substantiating data. In the initiation phase, we should be setting up the initiatives with a solid basis of fact. And the BMRA proposes that these should include the following: consistent, transparent, and audited financials of the existing system, a detailed operational overview of the current system and what the new models proposing, a reserve fund analysis in general, and specifically incorporating any liabilities, current or projected, and completed asset management plans for all participants. There are a couple of other points we just wanted to emphasize. First is the point of preservation of off-ramps, which we believe is critical, so that individual municipalities can make individual decisions regarding participation. And the other consideration is a benefit of requiring significant data to initiate the exercise. We feel this should help to avoid the need to make less than fully informed decisions too early in the process, which could expose participating municipalities to financial risk, or to miss out by declining opportunities that upon further study could have provided benefits to the municipality. A sound service model evaluation framework should encompass the four points introduced in our November correspondence, and we reference those or title those, thinking outside the box, considering a range of opportunities, do no harm to the municipalities participating, no surprises as the process moves forward and data is brought to the table, and play the long game, ensuring the long-term perspective on opportunities. And then there were a couple of other thoughts again, and we wanted to go back to the point of all participating municipalities must feel the process exhibits fairness and self-determination of service delivery levels. And we think that's especially important when downloading fairness and equity, in our view, does not mean implementing only one service standard. And also, as it relates to the perception of fairness, we think that for residents of participating municipalities to feel that the process is fair, that communication and engagement of the residents throughout the exercise will be needed. The last point, item six, speaks to acknowledging the municipal act's provisions for uploading a service. The BMRA views as critical Gray County's commitment to maintaining the right of lower-tier municipalities not to participate. For those municipalities who choose to participate, the BMRA supports moving these uploaded services into their own municipal service board, as contemplated in the municipal act, and that the full cost of these services are now covered under prescribed fees and charges and do not become part of the general county levy. In discussing potential service delivery models, we wanted to emphasize the need for unrestricted thinking and considering opportunities, and in particular, the idea of municipalities working across county lines, as the town of Blue Mountains has applied in some service agreements with Collingwood, and different counties collaborating, which could provide some interesting new approaches as well. So in closing, we do hope to see more examples of cooperative efforts aimed at providing benefits for all residents of Gray County, and we look forward to tracking the development of these collaborative service model initiatives throughout 2021 and beyond. So thank you for the opportunity to share our thinking with you. I know that your efforts at looking at considering new service models is important work, and it provides the potential for all residents to benefit. And so, as I say, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to provide our thinking as you go through this exercise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Torrance. I can't see the members, Rob, are you gonna, there we go. Counsel, any questions for the presenter?
I see Counselor Soever has his hand up.
Counselor Soever?
Yes, thank you, Jim, for that presentation, and you certainly raised some good points. We do need to look at how we can deliver services better within the two-tier system. Oftentimes, there's overlap of services, and I know the county right now is looking at least planning services and how we can introduce some efficiencies there. But you're quite right, when it comes to a lot of services, we have some weaknesses in both the data, particularly at the lower-tier level. In, you know, service delivery is complex. We also have different levels of service delivery at, in the various lower tiers, and I, you know, we are waiting a report from our CEO on the solid waste disposal as well, which is, you know, I just use that as an example, but, you know, police services, there's a lot of services where many communities have invested a lot of money over time, and, you know, they have assets in place, particularly with landfills and things like that. Landfill capacity, that's a very hard thing to put a price on. You know, when you look at the cost and the timelines of developing a new landfill, you know, you could almost say that capacity is priceless, because when the permitting process can cost more than building the landfill. And so if you have capacity, that's an asset that a municipality has invested in, and certainly any reorganization of the service delivery would have to take all of those things, as you point out, into account. And like you did mention, asset management plans there, because without completed asset management plans, you would basically have to do an asset management plan for that particular service and the facilities associated with it, to really get a good idea of what the impact would be on a community of doing the service delivery. So I know the province has mandated that they be completed in a number of years, but, you know, certainly, we've tried to push our schedule as much as we can with the staff that we have to be complete before the province's mandated timeframe, and, you know, I'm sure the province may look at extending the timeframes even because of the delays we've had with COVID, you know, in the future, as I think a lot of municipalities will have a struggle to meet those deadlines to come up with something. So you raised some very good points, and I want to thank you for your presentation. And the one question I would have is, what do you see as the biggest hurdle for the county in terms of, you know, restructuring the service delivery so that it's more efficient?
Are you asking that question generally, or the ratepayers are?
Well, what do you guys see? Obviously, you put a lot of work into this.
Yeah, you know, I guess our view is, and it comes back again to the discussion of how complex these exercises can be, and how critical having accurate data is. And so, you know, I guess our view is, we just need to make sure that the evaluated framework is really rigorous, and that there's confidence that all the, you know, potential participants really do have tight, accurate, current data to be able to bring to the table. You know, I think there are interesting opportunities, we just also feel, you know, there's a potential for reward, but there's also risk in these exercises. So we're just encouraging, as I guess, as rigorous and disciplined an approach to these as can be applied.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Warden, and thanks to Jim and his group for their presentation and for all the thought and work they put into this. We had an exchange with them last evening with their membership, and it seemed to go very well. I hope they got a lot out of it. I personally, I think this is the future of the two-tier system, is that we'll be doing more in the way of service sharing and allowing those municipalities that don't need a particular service or have already invested in it and don't need to be part of a countywide system, to not invest in that and to put their money where their local needs are. And that, to me, would be a lot more fair than the existing system, and would also be more efficient, because it would allow municipalities to put their money where it is most needed, without taking away the ability of those municipalities that need to, to work together. And that's the reality, we can't, you know, we can't, there are some things we can't do on our own, and we look to our neighbors, and some of our neighbors are on the other side, and some of you have the same situation, some of the neighbors are on the other side of a county border. Maybe the best way to deal with that is through the service sharing agreements. So I'm glad to see this suggestion come to us. I hope we all consider it seriously and understand that, well, it may, it may mean more cost to us in some areas, it will be less cost or no cost, but above all, it will move the money where it really needs to go, I think, is the way I would put it. So thank you, and I don't have any questions, just wanted to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Potter. Counselor McQueen. Should say Deputy Warden McQueen. Apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just thank you again, Jim, for your presentation. I know you and I spoke last year individually, and I just want to say, you know, a big part of, as a portion of what you're suggesting and something that we do, a big portion of our dollar spent is in our road system, certainly from construction and certainly on maintenance. And we do, basically, because of the vastness of Gray County, it can take an hour to get from one side to the other, our road system is very important, but we spend a lot of money there. Certainly, I think moving, you know, continuing to work with the upper and lower tiers on that road system, and we, you know, we do to a certain degree, and certainly, I know, you know, as far as corridors and county roads and that, you know, that, you know, we have a system in place. I know a few years ago, there was a road study done with regards to some suggestions of changes there, but I know, I think in the last term, they did look at, or Blue Mountains were looking at, the opportunity of downloading some of those roads, and I know we looked at that, but I think at the end of the day, it ended up being that the county is being a 24-hour road system versus a lower tier is maybe a 12- or 15-hour road system. It stayed the way it is, but certainly continuing to look at our transportation, I know we just have implemented the transit, which I think certainly is rolling out, and it's a good thing, we're trying to move people throughout the county and beyond into other areas. And so I think we continue, we need to continue to keep having those conversations and look at ways of improving efficiencies and delivering the service better to all the repairs, not only in our lower tier, but to all the county itself. So anyway, just through that, and I'm not sure, Jim, I think you probably were aware a little bit of the discussions around our road system, and I know that, I think you've had conversations or inquiries about where projects are, where things are being located in the sense of the future planning and stuff like that. And I know our roads department has been, I think they have like a 10-year plan that they keep updating as time goes on and that type of thing, but we can always, you know, continue to review that and look at those, you know, on the sense of the transportation part of it as well. So thank you for that. I don't know if you have any comments to that, but thank you, Mr. Warden.
Welcome, Mr. Torrance.
Yeah, just in response to Deputy Warden McQueen's point, I think transportation is obviously of critical importance to us, you know, given the growth that's going on. I think finding ways to operate transportation more effectively across the county will be one of the things that will be very important to us going forward. I guess it's kind of like a shared service model, obviously, and an example of where I think working across the county is going to be so critical. So we look forward to those developments as well.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Thank you also, Mr. Torrance, for the presentation, and I appreciate the insight that the BMRA brings to, through their delegations. My concern, main concern regarding this presentation is around the subjectivity of the definition of equity and fairness. Fairness, I guess, is easier to define the equity part, is where I struggle a little bit. Everyone's going to have a different idea of what is, what to them feels like true equity, or what is fair to them. So instead of, I guess, sorry, lost my train of thought. So I guess instead of having that in there, and part of it is also related to the, to the issue of floor-tier municipalities being allowed to opt out of services, I would rather see the county provide services that are either required or demanded by a majority of the lower-tier municipalities, because outside of that, we're either, it's impossible almost to be equitable, because we are levying funds from these municipalities for projects which they are not part of. And then that makes it harder to be fair and equitable. So I worry a little bit about the opting out part of it, and that remains a big concern, that and the definition of equity and fairness. Thank you, Warden Hicks.
Thank you. Counselor Potter, I do see your hand, but I want to make sure someone else who hasn't spoken as yet doesn't have their hand up, and I don't see anyone else, so go ahead, Counselor Potter.
Just to respond to Counselor Desai, if we're talking about equitable, I think there could be arguments made that the existing system isn't very equitable either. So, you know, obviously, equity would be, and fairness would be a big part of this, but I don't think that's beyond our ability to work out. So the existing system poses financial hardships on some and not on others, and so that is not equitable either.
I wonder if I could respond to the point on equity as well?
Please go right ahead, Mr. Torrance.
Thank you. I think in some regards, equity could be looked at in a fairly simple context in this particular area, in that, you know, the municipalities will currently have particular types of services delivered with certain delivery standards and certain costs per resident. I would think that if we're going to be looking at shared service models, then one element of equity would be that, you know, residents of particular municipalities who may participate shouldn't be looking at significant increases in the cost of those services versus what they're currently paying. So in that regard, I think it's, it's not pure equity, meaning everyone has exactly the same service and cost, but people shouldn't be seeing an increase of any significance in what they currently pay for the new model. So that's, I think that's really what we were contemplating in terms of the sense that that is one reflection of equity in the approach for these models.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Madam CAO, or perhaps Kevin, is there anything that you folks wanted to add on this presentation?
If not? If I may, Mr. Warden, I would just say, certainly, the, as I've indicated, I think earlier, the intent was to bring back a report that talked about a next step, and that next step really did involve undertaking a fulsome analysis with an outside firm. So I think that we are, you know, moving forward in a way that would be supportive of the points that Mr. Torrance and his group have raised, and I want to thank him for bringing this forward today.
Thank you very much, sir. I see a comment. If I need to address that. All right. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Warden. I do see Counselor Body, and I thought Counselor Desai had a hand up at one point.
Counselor Body?
Yeah, sorry for coming in late, but after Kim's comments, as I recall before I came on council, County Council, so between 2010, 2014, then Warden Duncan, and I'm stuck with the last name, town of Blue Mountains, put together an entire plan, I thought I could remember him presenting it to our lower-tier meeting about how we can work with the county and work between each other if we wanted to, and not everyone had to opt in. So I think that report's already there, and the whole plan was already approved, but I could be wrong, that maybe some of the people have been around before, Paul or Brian Knowles will remember, but I think there's something there already, and we just need to pull it out and look at it, but I could be wrong. Thanks.
If I might, that would be Duncan McKinley.
Yeah. And my understanding is that, Mr. Torrance, you did reference that, I believe, in your position paper, that there was an existing document.
Yes.
I recall reading that in your materials. Okay, was there anyone else, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Desai.
Go ahead, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, and I want to thank Mr. Torrance for expanding on the, on what he, his perception of fairness and equity is. And in that regard, I do worry that in some cases, people might end up paying for services that they do not currently have and do not have the appetite for. And the biggest example that comes to mind, and it's not necessarily a fair example, I will admit, but as an example, Southgate does collect, and Southgate and Meaford, I believe, collect organic waste as well as separate from solid waste. Gray Highlands doesn't do that. There isn't really an appetite, as far as I know, in Gray Highlands for that. So I worry that residents of Gray Highlands would then, would now pay an increased fee, albeit for an increased level of service, but it's a level of service they haven't asked for and they don't want or need. And so that's where I worry about it, but I do take the comments from the CEO and the fact, you know, that we will be looking at this holistically, so I do look, I do look forward to further debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? I think.
Mr. Soever.
Counselor Soever.
Yes, and in response to Counselor Desai's comments, I wholeheartedly agree, and certainly, I would point out that the town of Blue Mountains does also collect organics, and we do have weekly garbage pickup delivery, and, you know, which is a very high level of service compared to some other parts, but then we have a completely different demographic where half of our ratepayers are seasonal residents, and if you're coming up for the weekend and your garbage isn't going to be picked up the Tuesday after the weekend, but the next Tuesday, that means your garbage will be sitting out on the curb for 10 days, which is not really an ideal situation. So there is a huge diversity of service needs, and I think that's an important point that Counselor Desai raised.
Thank you. I think that's it for hands, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, I don't see anything else.
So with that said, Mr. Torrance, I want to thank you very much for the time and energy. So with that said, Mr. Torrance, I want to thank you very much for the time and energy that you and your ratepayers association has put into. Preparing that position paper, and I want to thank you for coming today and making your presentation and getting us involved in some good discussion.
Yeah, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we will move on to item six A in the agenda. The Living on Main Street Student Report. That puts Scott Taylor, I believe, on on deck. And that item is being moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Milne. Scott, and I believe Steve Furnas as well. You folks are on for this.
Great. Thank you, Warden Hicks and members of council. Steve is actually tied up in another matter at the moment, so you're stuck with having me presenting to you, but I'll try to cover what. What Steve had hoped to get across. So this story really is a good news story to start off our reports for 2021. Council may remember that last year, the county economic development team and planning team. Worked with five students from the University of Toronto to look at our downtowns across across all of Gray County. As part of their study, the students did this as part of their their master's planning program. And and we're just thrilled to have been able to work with them, and certainly we thank the students and the University of Toronto for allowing us to have this opportunity. As part of the work that the students completed, they were able to to visit six of nine of the downtowns. Across the county, and I will say that Steve and I took them on a bit of a tour and they got in some some local shopping as well. They also had the opportunity to review both our county official plan as well as municipal official plans and zoning bylaws across the county. They reviewed the existing community improvement plans across the county, as well as some of those draft ones that municipalities were still in the process of crafting. And I will say, in that regard, sort of aside from this study. We have been in touch with the municipalities and all nine of our municipalities already either have their community improvement plan in place. Or have plans in 2021 to complete their plans. So that's a great news story in that regard as well. The student team also interviewed a diverse cross section of stakeholders, the names of which were given to them by county staff. And they interviewed some municipal staff and in planning and economic development. As well as interviewing a number of developers and downtown business owners and landlords in that regard. To really try to get a good understanding from from both the public and private sectors of what's happening. Across our downtowns across Gray County, because we know they are very diverse in their makeup and their needs in that regard. And then they also completed a jurisdictional scan of other official plans and community improvement plans across, actually, the country. Including places like Hamilton and Peterborough, Whistler and Orangeville. Trying to get some good examples of what others are doing and where we may look to to model some of our policies and programming going forward. So the students had a number of discussion areas in their report, and I do encourage you to flip through that report when you have an opportunity. But I'll just summarize some of their key findings and recommendations in this regard. With respect to community improvement plans, specifically, they recommended that they need to be living documents and that we need to. At the municipal and county level regularly review these documents and consider updating over time. They recommended a prioritization of funding and and note that those priorities may involve over may evolve over time. So perhaps affordable and attainable housing is a priority for now. But maybe in a few years' time, there'll be a different priority that relates more to the business sector in our communities. They noted that it's optimal to have a community improvement plan grant applications reviewed by a diverse cross sector of municipal staff. Possibly including representatives from from your building, economic development and planning departments, just to to get a good understanding of the feasibility of those applications. They recommended that municipalities conduct impact audits on on their community improvement plan funding. So maybe you come up with some some sample scenarios to determine if people applied for and stacked various community improvement plan programs. What impact that could have towards their bottom line on on making their development or their improvement happen in that regard. They recommended that community that Gray and member municipalities actively market their community improvement plans. Obviously, the the improvement plans can only be successful if people are aware of them. So they recommended working with groups like your BIAs or your DIAs or even the county's. Sidneyham Campus Support Network to make sure that 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 members of our community and businesses are aware of these programs. And are aware of how and when to to apply for for funding in this regard. They noted that best practice across many municipalities is to consider allowing businesses to to cluster the applications. And perhaps even allowing for additional dollars where businesses are collaborating. So maybe you have. Three businesses on your main street that are side by side, and they each wish to take advantage of of a facade improvement. And so instead of just improving one facade, you're improving three in a row. And this appears to be best practice for many reasons, one of which is which is that encourages collaboration between businesses. And and we see that as a good thing for sure. They recommended that that Gray and Member Municipalities also consider offering wraparound services. To aid people in applying for those community improvement plan incentives. I know in the past we've heard that. That municipalities and the county have tried to make these these processes as as simple as possible to apply for. But if you're not used to applying for for grants in that regard, sometimes there can still be difficulties. So if there was a staff person either the county or the municipal level that could offer advice. And that that may may assist. And finally, with respect to community improvement plans. They also recommended that municipalities consider in some cases offering small upfront loans. With partial to help with the partial cost of a project upfront, just in case businesses didn't have that that capital in advance. More specifically, with respect to the housing need across the county and affordable or attainable housing in that regard. They did recommend that that our community improvement plans consider. Offering grants for housing, and I think in terms of the 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 improvement plans that we've seen either in full or in draft format so far. That's been a piece of each one of those, and certainly has been a piece that's communicated through the county's template in that regard. In interviewing some staff at the municipalities, they also recommended that dormitory style housing to address the housing need. Might also be to address the housing and labor needs might also be a good fit. And in some cases, like this might be a fit in our downtowns. Or in some cases, we might look at encouraging this type of housing in another part of our communities. They also recommended that that the county should look at a survey of of the commercial properties on Main Street to to see what the supply is like. And it could be in in some cases that were undersupplied with with the amount of commercial space available. Or it could be that there's an oversupply in some communities. And where there is an oversupply, that might help justify the conversion of some of that space to future residential needs, if if possible. They certainly recommended that we we track our our housing and our vacancy rates, including seniors housing in that regard. As a best practice from other municipalities, they highlighted that in our planning documents, both at the official plan and zoning level, we might consider a downtown transition zone. So these would be in the areas sort of if you picture the the fringe of your main streets as as the commercial areas start to to peter out. These would be in areas where we might be particularly supportive of of new housing and slightly more dense housing in that regard, where servicing permits. They recommended that we establish criteria that could be applied towards the the conversion of commercial spaces to residential spaces. But they, of course, certainly noted that the priority in the downtown. Where demonstrated would be would be keeping the ground floor commercial. And finally, they also recommended that municipalities consider reviewing their their downtown parking standards for both commercial and residential needs. And certainly in some municipalities across the province, they've been able to to reduce those parking standards and make it easier on both new businesses. And new housing starts to to establish in those areas. And finally, with respect to our downtowns, they had a few key recommendations on on downtown revitalization. One was that some municipalities could look at implementing urban design guidelines to really protect and establish. The character of some of our wonderful downtowns and ensure that new new development is living up to those standards in that regard. They recommend we look at our our zoning provisions across the county, again, including the protection of of that commercial ground floor. But also looking at areas where we might allow for new residential or particularly new multi residential units. And then finally, they recommended that we consider either removing or modifying the vacant property tax rebate program. And and throughout their interviews with various stakeholders, there were some that that saw that as a barrier. So that's the the quick highlight of the recommendations of the recommendations from the student report. And in terms of the the staff recommendation, we're recommending that that council receive this report. But also that that we forward this report on to your own municipal staff so that they can review the recommendations and work with those. And then between the county planning and economic development, as well as your own municipal staff. We consider implementing some of these recommendations in in our planning documents and our community improvement plans as we move forward. So that's all I have at this stage, but certainly happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much, Scott. It's a terrific report. And boy, we've had tremendous success, haven't we, with the getting the assistance of master students in helping us with these really helpful reports. Counsel, any questions, any discussion? Counselor Robinson, I see you, Counselor Mackey next.
Well, thank you, Warden Hicks, and through you, I just want to say congratulations to our Gray County Planning Department and the. Students for preparing this very comprehensive document. We certainly enjoyed their presentation when they came to County Council. I believe within the report, nine point zero concluding remarks says it all. It is clear from the recommendations above that the municipalities have a direct role in implementing these changes. Gray County must continue to foster an environment in which changes can be supported. I couldn't support that anymore or articulate that any better. I just look forward to the changes that that could be implemented by these recommendations. And I certainly hope that the area chambers of commerce and the local BIAs are also included within this. And, you know, see improvements overall for Gray County business. Well done overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden Hicks, and good morning, everyone. Thanks very much for the report, Scott, and certainly to our master students. Just wondering about. Residential and commercial properties don't always live in harmony. So I'm just wondering if within the report, whether. Potential conflicts that exist between, you know, commercial and residential, whether that really got looked into and what the possible resolutions to some of those conflicts may be. Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for that question. That's a good question. It didn't come up specifically. As far as I'm aware, in terms of the students' research or their their interviews in that regard. I think moving forward, we look would look at those downtown transition zones as as areas that would be maybe particularly sensitive to what you've outlined there, Counselor Mackey. The one question we were quite interested to to look into, which is maybe an offshoot of of your question. Had to do with with building owners in our downtown and whether or not there are any barriers to to renting out their space. Either renting out their ground floor or commercial spaces or towards being a landlord of of the residential units above. And certainly we did hear some comments in that regard from some of our building owners. So it's certainly something that I I think we want to dig further into. And and explore with with some of the landlords and 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 business owners in that regard. But your point is well taken, and it's certainly something we can consider as as we look at our own official plan and zoning updates moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Scott. And I'm wondering if you could touch on the thought of short term rentals in our downtowns and whether they. Students had any discussions about that or experienced any lower tiers that were entertaining those. And I ask because we do have an Airbnb now on our main street in Meaford, and I'm just curious if if that was explored at all as as you went through the CIP plans with the students.
Scott?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Counselor Keating. It was something that came up, and and I specifically recall when we presented the original report to to County Council. That was raised by council as something they they asked the students to look into. And and so we provided that direction to the students in this regard, and we're particularly keen to see if it if it came up during the interviews. And and in speaking with the students following their their interviews, it wasn't something that was was raised as as a major factor. In terms of it didn't get raised by either many landlords or many municipal planners or economic development officials in that regard. It came up a few times, and in some cases. Some people saw it as an opportunity, and especially in maybe some of our smaller downtowns. Where we don't have the size available to support maybe a traditional hotel. Maybe this would be a way of of supporting small scale tourism efforts. With with respect to people staying in and visiting in our downtowns. But certainly we're cognizant of of some of the experiences, say, in town of Blue Mountains and other municipalities across the country. Whereby the the presence of of short term accommodations has led to. Affordability issues with respect to the rental market and also with respect to land use conflict. So, you know, this is a long winded response. I apologize for that, but it wasn't raised as as a major issue, but it's certainly certainly something the staff that we're cognizant of. Moving forward in that regard, and certainly we see that as our municipalities implement their own official plans and zoning bylaws. We may may see a stratified approach across the county in that some may encourage these uses in our downtowns versus some may choose to have those uses elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands, Madam Clerk, so if that is the, oh, I do. I see Counselor Carlton waving, in fact.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question for Scott. I can see the validity of changing commercial spaces to residential at this time. When there's a definite housing need, but what happens if circumstances change and that commercial space is needed again? How easy or how difficult is it going to be to revert to a commercial from residential?
Through you, Mr. Warden. That's a great question, Counselor Carlton, and that's something that we as staff have struggled with. And certainly one of the impetus is for for undertaking this study with with the wonderful students from the University of Toronto. You know, across their interviews, they they heard a number of factors. They interviewed one particular landlord that had said that their commercial space had set vacant for over 20 years now. So we struggle with, okay, well, if you've got this commercial space that that appears not to be needed, of course, there's other factors that may be in play there. Should we consider residential conversions? And then to your question, what would happen if five, 10, 15 years down the road? We need additional commercial space in that regard. So that's where the one of the key recommendations was that. We, as a county or or you as Member Municipalities, consider allowing for criteria. For what what needs to be met in in terms of those conversions. So it might look at a threshold of vacancy rates, both at the commercial level and at the residential level. It might also look at criteria to say that you could look at some ground floor residential, but perhaps that's only in behind. And I know I can picture some of our downtowns whereby the businesses and the housing units have have. Entryways in the front, you know, across the sidewalk of your main street, but also in the rear. So maybe there's some ground floor accessible housing in the rear, but you maintain that commercial space along along the the main street. The other thing that came up in the interviews was in some cases, we had commercial spaces in our downtown. Which were simply too large for what the market is demanding, and people didn't want, say, 10,000 square feet. So we need to make sure that the the policies and particularly maybe even the CIP grant programs are flexible to allow for. Maybe some of those spaces to be further divided up to 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 meet the needs of of what the commercial market is 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 demanding there. But. Again, your comment is a good one, and it's something that we hope to address through through further criteria. Rather than just kind of opening the floodgates and saying, yeah, any vacant commercial space can be can be converted to to residential. Because we don't want to soothe ourselves in the foot with respect to that commercial need.
Okay, I think that's it for the discussion.
CIAO Windgrove.
I'm sorry, Kim.
Not at all. Now, just to follow on Scott's point, I I think it's important for us to. Inform ourselves around other jurisdictions that have done more of this and done it successfully, I think. When you look to what small communities are like in Europe, and if you're if you're moving to a a complete communities model where you want. And people want to be able to. A complete communities model where you want and people want to be able to. Walk to things and and have that active transfer transportation, then it's it's really important that. You can get some groceries and get your haircut and and have some of those services. Close at hand. And I think there's lots of examples where those two uses can. Exist and and actually really complement one another. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Scott, and and for and the and the students for for this report. It's it's. I don't want to say that they're almost stating the obvious. But this is a long running issue in a lot of the small downtowns throughout Gray County, probably throughout Ontario. Or even the country for that matter. But I'm I'm just thinking if. If the business case was there. And the and the reality. To get a return on the investment was there for the landowners or the landlords. Uh, I don't think you'd want to stand in the way or you'd get run over. But the reality is a lot of these old downtowns. The upstairs is, they're almost like barns, some of them. The 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 investment to make it into a safe, livable space. Is almost prohibitive. And I'm looking at Counselor Burley, and I'm thinking he's probably got his hands into some of these renovations. And what a mess it's probably turned out to be. So there's no doubt that there's a need for low cost or affordable housing. But I'm not sure the reality would would bear that out to do it downtown some of these places, because it it it's just too expensive. To make it workable. So I I don't know whether the students looked into that. Aspect of, I didn't read anything in the report when they, you know, talking about. The reality of what it costs to make some of these spaces livable, but. I I think that's a real stumbling block, and and to suggest that a few hundred dollars from the municipality is going to fix that. I I think you're talking into the breeze.
Scott.
Sure. Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. It's it's a good point, Counselor Milne, and it it's something that that did come up in the interviews. To a certain degree, is my understanding, if you're talking to the students. That in some cases, accessibility requirements, or in some cases, as as you've mentioned. The condition of of some of the current downtown buildings. Make it cost prohibitive to 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 rent out those those facilities. One of the things, and 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 maybe this maybe me being a bit of a dreamer in that regard, one of the things that we are hoping is that as we see. Development across our county and 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 certainly we've seen development pick up in the last number of years and and subsequently. Land values going up in that regard. That they that might help make the financial argument. That some of these downtown spaces could be rehabilitated in that regard, if you will. The other thing I'd I'd throw in there is is that there are some of our downtowns that have have, you know, completely vacant land or or missing buildings, if you will. So if we can work with potential developers as they're looking at, you know, developing these vacant lots or potentially rehabilitating. Some of these buildings, maybe some of the incentives in that regard could help turn the tide and 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 make an impact, but. But certainly, your point is well taken that in some cases, it would take a fairly substantial grant before certain. Living spaces became feasible in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's it now, Madam Clerk, is it not? Okay, good. So we've had very good discussions. So on the motion to receive the report, to use it for future use, and to share it with the lower tier municipalities. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that item is approved. Thank you very much. How are we feeling? Does anyone need a break right now? Just nod your head if you do. Okay, we'll take a very short break then. Let's say we'll get back together at 20 minutes two, so short break. And so we're back together. I see. I see that we do have a quorum, and we're going to move on to item six B. Which is funding agreements with Social Services Relief Fund Phase Two. That puts Anne Marie Shaw, our Director of Housing, on deck. And this item is moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Anne Marie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. Back in October, I brought a report forward to council with some funds for the Social Services Relief Fund Phase Two. We received more funding in December of 2020. This report is adding an extra $433,900 to our Social Services Relief Fund. Second part of this report is back in 2010, October of 2020, I also brought forward three proposed. Projects for the funding, looking at mitigating risk for vulnerable people in our communities and also encouraging longer term housing solutions. This is also to prepare the agreement with the three. Proponents that are proposing to develop some transitional housing. On page 70 of our package, there is a.
Sorry, Anne Marie, I'm going to stop you for a quick sec.
Sure.
It appears that your sound is, for me anyways, the sound is going in waves. So I don't know if you can get closer to the mic or.
Certainly can. Does that help?
I can hear you perfectly now, yes.
Perfect. And so back to the proponents, we have three proponents that are going to develop. Going to renovate existing buildings into transitional housing. This report is allowing us to enter into an agreement with. The three proponents and also looking at what we are going to do with the additional funds we did receive through the Social Services Relief Fund. We have Mamwimwim, which is an indigenous nonprofit in our community that has proposed three. Transitional units. Our Women's Centre Gray Bruce is now going to be able to transit or to renovate to. Two bedroom units into four single units. That is a a need in our community that is being unmet at this point. Is transitional housing for single women. So with the additional funds, we are able to now renovate two units instead of the one. And we also have Lutheran Social Services, which has a building in which they're going to renovate into three transitional units also. As part of the additional funds, we did contact public health and other agencies to see. What are some of the unmet needs that are happening still in our community? So with the additional funds, we are also looking at providing some outreach services for mental health and for emergency housing. And also, we are adding $100,000 to our emergency housing. Funds for 2021. We've seen an increase in the number of nights people are are needing funding or needing to stay in emergency housing. And also, there has been an increase in the rates that are being charged on a per night basis, too. This agreement also acknowledges that we will be entering into a security with the three proponents with the funds. They will be registered as a mortgage charge and also acknowledging that we will need to move ahead with this. The deadline is the end of January, so. We were are proposing that the agreement be signed prior to council. Any questions? And I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. That's a great news report. Anne Marie, are there any questions from counselors? I don't see any, Madam Clerk. Oh, I see Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Anne Marie, where where physically in the county are these units going to be renovated?
Well, the Women's Centre has is existing as it is right now in Owen Sound. So the Women's Centre does provide services for all of Gray and Bruce Counties, mainly Gray County. But so it will be in Owen Sound and Mamwim is also and Lutheran Services are both in Owen Sound. And it is where our highest need for transitional.
Right. And I, if I might, Mr. Warden, I I do appreciate the efforts to provide these transitional units. But I'm sure there are needs. You know, throughout the two counties. So, I mean, every bit helps, no doubt about that. But there are needs further afield than Owen Sound. I don't want to pick on Owen Sound, but. Anyway, thank you.
Your point is duly noted. And Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, Anne Marie. I agree with what Counselor Milne is saying, that there's definitely demand throughout the county. In my experience in the past, there is an 800 number to access the Women's Centre of Health is needed. Is there ability for someone further out in the county for someone to go get them if someone calls in and asks for help to get them into one of those housing units?
It's a really good question.
We don't actually, the county doesn't run that program. It would be Women's Centre, so they would probably be better to answer that, but I do believe that they do have funds for transportation as required.
So this is a wonderful opportunity for us to plug once again the services of 211. So rather than trying to find that direct number, which you could find, 211 is just so easy to go to, and they can help with all those things, including. The transportation, I'm certain. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to call the question that we received this report at the agreements be prepared with the proponents listed here. And is there anyone opposed to the motion? I do not see anyone, so I'm going to say that that is carried. So moving on to item C, 6C. And that's the Terms of Reference for Long Term Care Redevelopment Task Force. I believe that our CAO is on deck for that, and this item has been moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Woodbury. Madam CAO.
Thanks very much. So I'll I'll run through the report and then Heather will speak to the membership question, okay? So as has been previously discussed, the establishment of a long term care redevelopment task force. To oversee the initial planning phases of our two long term care redevelopment projects is recommended. As councils aware, we have received support from the province to proceed with redevelopment. 128 bed facilities at both Rockwood Terrace in Durham and at Gray Gables in Markdale. At the present time, we have consultants retained that are looking at the housing options in business case. For the 32 acre site in Durham. The RFP to assess the optimal use of Gray Gables closes Friday, and it would be my intention to. Bring whatever proposals we receive on Friday to this committee for consideration. I want to be clear with everyone that that designing and building the long term care facilities. Is the commitment and the priority. However, these additional or changed uses that would come at a later phase in the in the development. Need to be considered at this time so that we can lay out the sites appropriately, or in the case of Gray Gables. Best understand how a new building would connect with and and leverage. The the current facility that that already exists on that site. So under the Terms of Reference, this committee would be tasked with assisting and advising County Council. In fulfilling its governance responsibilities with respect to the planning stage of these two projects. I think we've talked to council earlier that there's a a great deal of of oversight. From the province. So as we moved through the phases of this, we'd want to bring them to this committee to ensure. That everyone was 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 comfortable and and understood what was being proposed and the costs, et cetera, as we can estimate them. The province would undertake their approvals or provide comments or requirements for for any changes. But this committee takes us to. In my recommendation, to construction drawings. So this would get us to that point, and and then at that point where we would be then. Tendering projects, at that point, I think we could then revisit the committee membership, the the nature of the tasks then changes when you, once you commence construction, then you're. In in more of an oversight position around. The various parts of the construction project and dealing with the 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 issues and challenges that can arise as you go through something like that. So that's the the proposal, and I'm happy to answer any any questions anyone has.
So are there any questions, Counsel? If not, I'm going to turn things over to Madam Clerk, Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Kim, do you have any? Indication of how long this phase of the project would take?
Ish. Think ish. Well, I think we know, we know that the. The consultants for the SHS. For Rockwood and and Durham intend to have a business case for us to consider in the springtime. I would think that we're probably looking at. The the summer time for the Gray Gables piece. And then after that, the 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 planning piece of the facility itself. May take another potentially nine months. And and then we're there. So I I think we're we're well into another year.
So we're running up to the end of this count.
I believe I believe that's probably where we'll end up.
And I was thinking, if I might, Mr. Warden, if I was thinking that if the facility, at least at Rockwood, needs to be. Substantially completed by 2025, you know, it's 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 at least a two year project to build the thing, if not three years. And given that the province, you know. If if we've got as far as, you know, the framing or whatever, we just haven't got the doors and the windows hung yet. They might give us another year to finish it. They're not going to stop us. So let's say 26, back up three years, 23. Yeah, I guess that the math kind of works there, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I I think one of the questions that that we'll have to discuss at the at the committee is the is the merits of. Either separating the two projects and dealing with them as entirely independent things as opposed to trying to. Either run them entirely in parallel or run them under a a situation where you've got one one contractor that's really responsible for for completing both. But there's extensive site works required for the Durham property. That is a piece that is going to need to happen relatively soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Counselor O'Leary, and I'm assuming Counselor Burley may have something to say as well.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to ask, Kim. If we're going to have a task force, should we not have it? Go right through construction? I know it's a long time, but I just. I'm just thinking my experience is as chairing the ad hoc committee with the renovations at City Hall. There is decisions to be made all the time. That, you know, it just takes up too much council time if you don't use your task force to, you know, make the certain, right, the the small recommendations along the way. So I'm just wondering why we. Wouldn't have a task right from the start to finish.
Well, I entirely agree that once we, once we get to the construction phase, we're not going to stop having a separate entity to to provide oversight to that. I think I was providing potentially either an off ramp or an on ramp, depending on on your perspective. For that membership to change when when we get to really a a different focus for the group's work.
Thank you. Counselor Burley, I'm sorry I put you on the spot. I didn't mean to do that, but I do know that you have. Feelings about some of the things discussed here.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Whenever the time comes, I will be put my name forward for this committee. I think I'm a prime fit for having over 40 years' experience in the construction trades in all phases, building. Ministry of anything else. I really think I'd be a great fit for it. We're really, really under the gun here when you come to a construction of these both sizes like Rockwood and the Gray Gables. I mean, many, many decisions need to be made. Timeframe. Kim, I really think you're sort of grasping straws for a timeframe, but man, we're going to be really, really under the gun to try and meet the. Kim, I really think you're sort of grasping straws for a timeframe, but man, we're going to be really, really under the gun to try and meet those guidelines.
I agree.
And, and I really feel that to make a project like this, which is, again, is a, a committee decision, it's just going to be almost impossible to do both at the same time to meet timeframe.
Okay, that's probably a, a good transition to Madam Clerk, if you can help with the composition of the task force.
Sorry, Mr. Warden. Before we get there, I do see Counselor Sellever's hand up.
Oh, my apologies. I did not see that. Counselor Sellever?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Certainly, you know, this redevelopment has been, you know, a controversial topic for, for many years now, and I, I, I totally agree with the comments of Counselor Burley. The timeframe is very tight, and we would want to see these things move forward. So this will require quite a bit of commitment of time and effort to make sure that the projects stay on schedule. And so I would, I would encourage that, you know, the, the committee composition, once we get to there, you know, the committee has to be aligned. And I know there's been strong opinions on both sides of this issue, whether Gray Gables should be redeveloped or whether we actually, you know, consolidate. And I would hope that, you know, the members that do apply for the committee are those that actually believe in the project, and, and we don't end up with a committee that's divided and doesn't operate efficiently. So, you know, looking at voting records on this, I would urge councillors, if they don't believe in the project, please don't apply.
Anybody else? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Hey, Counselor Mc, Counselor McQueen?
All right, Deputy Warden McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and certainly thank you for stopping bringing this forward. I know it's talked about, about time, there's a time slot here we need to get moving, and we do need to get moving on. You know, time is, is of the essence, and certainly getting this committee in place and, and getting that report back with regards to how we move forward is, is very good. You need to do the background research on, on the building, the grounds, you know. I know the Madam CAO brought a, a report, preliminary report back, I think it was about a year plus ago, Madam CAO, where you looked at some conceptual ideas of whether it was, you know, an addition or if it was a separate build. And I know that certainly the site's going to be busy with the new hospital coming. There's a lot of infrastructure, certainly with it being, and with regards to the one particular part of Gray Highlands, I guess I should refer as Gray Gables. I know that we're waiting for the report for Rockwood Terrace as well, coming back and, and that, like, those are very key points of, of sort of doing the groundwork of, of moving forward. Certainly, I would like to certainly put my name forward as, as certainly a person that would like to be on this committee. I do have a fair bit of construction background in my past as well. And so I certainly would like, and plus also being the representative from Gray Highlands, I have a good wealth of knowledge in the sense of, of the building being on, in that building since 2003 as a councillor, and certainly the site. There's a lot of different increases working with. There's the, I know that we have, Allegiant has, certainly has an area that they have put in place for services and, and that. And there's a number of other aspects of being in Markville that I certainly feel that I would bring a, a great amount of knowledge and with regards to rebuild for Gray Gables itself. As far as Rockwood itself as well, we know we've been working through that as well, and certainly the larger piece of property gives us more opportunity to spritz, to span out with that rebuild and how that would work. And just last comment, I would say is I would think it would make sense to have a representative from the municipalities that these two rebuilds are being constructed in, similar to having task force, similar to like the Onsal Hanover Task Force, we certainly have people from those municipalities on those task force. So I just think this is sort of a similar idea. It's, it's very important to have representation from those municipalities where these rebuilds are going to happen, just to help on those parts of knowledge base and, and moving things. Certainly, if you come across a situation, you need to have people that are on the know to make things move quickly if, if need be, or where to contact are, who the staff person is or whatever. And anyway, I just pointed out there, Mr. Warden, and I certainly have interest in sitting on this as well. Thank you.
So thank you, Deputy Warden. And it would appear, Madam Clerk, we're clearly crossed the threshold of moving on to the composition of the task force.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So the request did go out with the agenda last week for any members interested, and Tara and I heard from Councillors Mackey, Robinson, Millen, and O'Leary, and I've since heard this morning from Councillors Burley and McQueen. So is there any other member of council who is interested in this committee? The composition in the terms of references for councillors plus the warden. So I'm looking to see if there's anyone else that is interested in sitting on this task force.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, you went a little quick. I've got Mackey, Robinson, Mill, O'Leary, Burley.
And then Burley and McQueen.
McQueen, thank you. So were there any others? Counselor, well, we've got you already, Counselor O'Leary. I'm just trying to find out for this quick second here if there are any others that want to put their name forward. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Counselor O'Leary, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak. When I put my name in, there was, at the time, there was only three people. So I should explain that I, I do have eight years' experience in, in building homes. And I also had six years' experience in the pulp and paper industry overseeing the construction and installing new machines, which is industrial experience in, in construction. So I wanted to get that out. That's one of the reasons that I put my name in.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to actually stop Counselor O'Leary right now. No disrespect. We are actually going to get to a couple of statements like we do with normal elections, where you can have two minutes to speak on why you would like to sit on this committee. So I just, I don't want the, the, looking for other members to just preempt those, those conversations. So with the six members, then we will need an election.
Yes.
But before that, I will go around and just ensure that those that put their name forward are still willing to stand on that committee. Now, Counselor Mackey.
Go ahead, Counselor Mackey. Now, you're on mute. There you go.
Thanks, Warden. And before I go into the, the reasons I would like to be on the committee, I was just wondering if there is any appetite from council. The, the terms of reference indicate for members, a number of our other committees have, have larger memberships than that, and with how important this is going to be for Gray County, I was wondering if there's any appetite from council to extend the membership to six. Thank you.
It's always a possibility, I suppose, if, if it's the wish of council. Madam Clerk, any comments about that? It's always the debate about just how large should a body be? It makes it difficult, I think. We have a number of committees and task forces on the go. I can't imagine what a task it is for staff to try to pull everybody together. Number one.
It is challenging. Yes, it is challenging to.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. It is challenging to, to pull that group together, and as the size grows, it just makes it more difficult to do that. But you are absolutely correct, Warden Hicks, is that it, it is the, at the wish of council. So if that is the wish, then we would just need an amendment put on the floor.
Counselor Mackey?
Well, just a follow-up comment. You know, as Counselor Burley and O'Leary had mentioned, there is a lot of, you know, things that will come up as we go through this process that will require timely decisions. If we have a, a, a committee that's made up of six people, your quorum is enlarged. So being able to get together on a quick basis would be improved, in, in my opinion. So I would certainly move that we increase the membership to six. Thank you.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Mill?
Just clarification, Mr. Warden. Madam Clerk, would that be, or even to Scott, I suppose he's making the motion. Is the six include the warden, or is it six plus the warden?
Through you, Mr. Warden. My motion would be to have six members of council plus the warden.
Okay, Counselor, anything else, Counselor Mill? Okay, Counselor Carlton, I did see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would be in favor of the six. When I was reading that full report, it, it thought crossed my mind that that's a lot of information that's going to have to be looked at, and I think we'd be better with more looking at it than fewer. So I would support the six.
Thank you.
Mr. Warden, we see Councillors McQueen, Potter, and Robinson.
Okay, so starting with Counselor McQueen, or Deputy Warden McQueen. I'm going to get it straight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden. And I think this is a great solution. I think the six that have put their name are, are really interested in being part of this as far as, I think, commitment. I think there's going to be a huge commitment there from those representatives. And I think this is a, a good solution of amending this and moving six on there, and it brings that wider wealth of information or of, of knowledge, and I think it's a very positive thing moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Potter?
Thank you, and that, that pretty much covers what I was going to say. What I've heard this morning is that this is a big job, and we're going to need a lot of people involved to, to do it. I like the, the level of expertise that I've heard, and I frankly would have a hard time choosing because I, I think having led a project nowhere near the size and scope, but I know it takes a lot of, of good people. I was lucky enough to have a lot of good people, and I think that's what we need here. So when you have, you know, people with experience, people with knowledge, I, I think if they're willing to be part of it, then by all means, let's, let's put them in there. So I, I'm quite happy to see it expand to six.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Robinson?
Well, thank you, Warden, Warden Hicks. And certainly, I was most prepared to amend my motion to, to include the, to extend the complement of members of council, and certainly the motion to amend is most welcome. I, I think it's really important to expand the complement to six plus the warden, six members of county council plus the warden. We've heard this is a very important project, two projects. Availability and commitment certainly fits into the criteria. And so I will be supporting the main motion and the amended motion for certain. And I just wanted to offer to anyone that will listen, but certainly members of county council that I do have experience with new builds, redevelopment, and renovations with respect to local government facilities, and I am most pleased to be serving on this task force. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. I don't see any other speakers, Madam Clerk. So I'll turn it back to you. I guess you'll. Oh, then I'll call the question, sorry, on the amendment. Is there anyone opposed to the amendment, moving it from four to six? I don't see anyone opposed, so I'm going to say that that is carried. Now we're back to the main motion, and I suppose, Madam Clerk, we're not going to be needing an election at this point because we have six nominees.
That is correct. So the main motion will be amended. The terms of reference will be endorsed as amended, and the council members on the task force will be Councillors Mackey, Robinson, Millen, O'Leary, Burley, and Deputy Warden McQueen.
Thank you very much. So I will call the question then on the main motion on, oh, I see Counselor O'Leary. Comment?
Mr. Warden, I, I wanted to have a chance to respond to what Counselor Sellever said. I don't like the idea of going back, looking at how anyone votes, but I want to be clear with me. Regardless of how I vote, whatever council's decision is council's decision, and I will always support that 100%. And I hope no one on council ever questions that, at least with me. I think I've shown, if I voted against it before, I put myself on the long-term care committee, I developed a passion for it, and I've taken on this decision with council the way I was supposed to. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Here, 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 here.
Good point. Counselor Woodbury, was that just saying here, here, or? Okay.
I see Counselor McQueen.
Sorry, Counselor who?
Deputy Warden McQueen.
Deputy Warden McQueen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, definitely, we're moving forward on a positive note, that's for sure. That's fantastic. I just want to make a comment that, so it was talked about how long this, I think Counselor Millen mentioned this, how long it's going to take. Certainly, yeah, if it goes past this term of council, then there would have to be, you know, carrying on, you know, after the next provincial election, and they'd have to redo the committee to keep moving on forward to Madam Clerk, correct? Right? So I just wanted, you know, there would be that, you know, so what are we at? We're at January 2020. The next term of council starts January, December 2022, or January 2023, whatever they end up provincially figuring out what that date is. And so that would, you know, it's probably realistically, the, the, the project will not be completed if, as this needs to be a minute to roll over from a task force looking at it to a task force of a building committee or however that moves forward. So but certainly that would have to be repopulated with new members, and I just wanted to make that point clear as the horizon carries on through Mr. Warden. So no different than any other committees that we would be part of as well during that break. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I don't see anyone else with a hand up, Madam Clerk. We're good to go?
Yes.
Then I'm going to call the question on the motion, the main motion that's been amended. Is there anyone opposed? I do not see anyone opposed, so I'm going to say that that motion carries. Thank you very much. So we are now tasked with moving on to the items that were polled from the consent agenda. I think we're going to start, we're going to do them, even though they were polled in different order. I'm going to put them back in order as they appear on the, on the schedule here. So dealing first, I guess, what item B, Affordable Housing Task Force Minutes, I believe that was Counselor Kivony. Am I correct in that?
Yeah. Yes.
So to get to that.
So we do need it.
Counselor Kivony, you have the floor.
Oh, we do need it moved and seconded first, Mr. Warden, on the floor.
Thank you. So moved by Counselor Kivony and seconded by Counselor Mackey. Affordable Housing Task Force Minutes. I'm trying to find it in my. Counselor Kivony, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Warden Hicks, and I just wanted to make sure that county council had a chance to think about the recommendation from the task force to consider increasing our budget by 1% as we move forward with those discussions on the 29th. It was quite a robust discussion at the Affordable Task Force Committee, and we very much are in agreement that we'd like county council to consider this request because we all understand the need for supporting affordable housing, and I just wanted to ask folks to give that some consideration before we move into a budget deliberations.
Very good. Any questions or comments from anyone else?
I had Counselor O'Leary.
Counselor O'Leary.
And Counselor Millen.
I see Counselor Mill as well.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to thank Kim and staff, in particular Anne Marie, Randy, and Kevin for their presentations during this. I also want to thank all the councillors for the discussion that we had. I thought what was really important is that it was a unanimous vote at the end after a thorough discussion. And I also want to thank Counselor Kivony for pulling it out because I think this is a big decision. It's a huge commitment, and I think all of council should take ownership of this. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Welcome. Counselor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I guess what I'm looking for is a little bit of clarification considering the impact of this. Does this motion recommend that the 1% tax levy increase be considered? Or are we actually directing finance to? Or are we actually directing finance to... Or are we committing ourselves to actually doing it? Or is this simply a recommendation to be considered during budget deliberations?
Thank you. Perhaps I'll ask Kevin Weppler. I know that he was asking a lot of questions to get clarification while we were having this discussion.
Because this is a big, this is councillor O'Leary, you're right, this is a big decision.
Yes. So, Mister Weppler.
Yeah, my understanding was that, just to, I guess, give a bit of background here, based on all the discussions, and then, and then there was some up or downloading of childcare costs that are not going to happen in 2021, and our benefit renewal was, we received that during budget discussions that we, as staff, put together proposing $500,000 into the 2021 budget for this Affordable Housing Fund. And when that information was shared with the task force, the task force asked that a 1% budget increase on top of that be added, and that would stay within the budget, go forward. But my understanding, this would be part of the budget deliberations. So it was directing staff to include it in the 2021 budget, and then it would be there for council's consideration.
That's right. Anything else, councillor Mill? Thank you. I was going to say the chair of that task force is our deputy warden, so he might want to queue himself up to say something, but I see councillor Mackey's hand.
Thanks, Mister Warden. So just so I'm clear, we will have an opportunity during budget negotiations to further discuss this. We are, this is just in principle today that we are looking at passing your, this resolution.
So back to Mister Weppler.
Yes, there's been nothing approved by council for this to happen. So it's, this expenditure of transferring funds to a fund would need to happen through the budget process and then be approved in your revenue expenditure bylaw then. So it's coming to council at that budget session for discussion.
Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mister Warden, and I certainly support the initiative. I firmly believe that affordable housing is essential, you know, both for our working poor, for our individuals with disabilities, for people with mental health. The list goes on and on. Just a question specific to this resolution. So in this coming year, we'd be looking at 500,000 plus 600 and, well, 1.1 million this year, and then going forward, we'll be looking at 600 and change going forward. Is that correct?
Mister Weppler?
Yes, that's my interpretation. So we understand the childcare changes in funding, cost sharing stuff is still not going to take place in 2022. So that additional, that 500,000 will come back. I would support that, that funding that will be required for childcare. So yeah, go forward in your 2022 budget then, and be looking at 1% similar to our 1% we put in for our asset management plan for assets. So this is what that would be looking to do, is continue with a 1% being transferred to this Affordable Housing Fund.
Thanks for that clarification, Kevin.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Desai.
Thank you. I guess this question can also be asked at the budget deliberations, but I did cut out over there, so I'm not sure if councillor Mackey answered this when he, when he answered the question. My question was, is there targeted activities that the task force is also recommending that we undertake with the money that we're putting aside? Or is it just, let's put the money aside and then figure out what we're going to do with it?
I don't know who's the most appropriate, whether we turn to the chair or if we turn to the CAO.
Emily Meyer.
I would just say that there is a report still due from the Housing Task Force, so I would...
And which is, and which is why, Mister Warden, I was unsure if my question was was in order or whether it was out of order. So if you do rule that it is out of order, I am perfectly happy to accept that ruling as well.
Yeah. Madam CAO?
I would say that Anne-Marie, who is likely still on the call here, did lay out a strategy and what she had hoped to achieve, where there were opportunities for us to really make an impact with new housing units. And so I think the committee, when they saw that there were a number of opportunities for us to really make a difference if we had the resources, was where they, they felt, if I can say that, that it was appropriate and useful to try and dedicate the resources to that.
Could I also speak, Mister Warden?
Is that to Henry?
It's Anne-Marie.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. The report did outline, over the next four years, there is the capacity for us, along with our own funding and looking at provincial funding and what is available, to make a sizable dent in our waitlist, which is excellent news, but it does require funding. In the last three years, we've been able to put together 54 units of affordable housing, which is excellent. But considering we have 550 people that live in Gray County that are waiting for housing, that would look at us being able to complete our waitlist act in 30 years. So recognizing that we need to put some county dollars in, we were able to identify about five or six projects that would allow us to complete about 200 units in the next four years.
Any other hands? I do not see any. Okay, then I'm going to call the question.
No, sorry. Councillor McQueen?
I'm sorry. Deputy Warden, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mister Warden. I must be on the next screen.
You are, yes, you're on my second screen.
Yeah, I'll have to use my raised hand that the clerk reminds us that we're supposed to be doing, so I apologize.
I'll try to, I'll try to flip back and forth.
That's okay. No, yeah, so just following up in some of the comments and thank you, Mister Warden, for directing some comments to myself as the chair, and thank you for those committee members appointing me or electing me as the chair. But I will say that this is a bold move. I'm looking, I'm thinking of councillor O'Leary, maybe even councillor Millen, who spoke very adamant about this, and we need to do something, as councillor O'Leary has quoted over and over, and that has certainly, is something that we're doing, and it's something, it's bold. It's something that is coming to the budget. I mean, ultimately, it will be discussed overall, what we, what we're going to do at the budget meeting, but it is bringing it forward to that. And, you know, it's one of those things that it's setting a new direction probably, you know, in the sense of Gray County, and it's something that we also need to speak to in a sense of, it's a good news story in the sense of what we're trying to accomplish. You know, the high price of cost of real estate, and we know housing, and Anne-Marie has brought many reports with regards to the concern, the issues that are there. We see it, you know, and also on our other task force with regards to the Yon San Hanover Task Force, and we see a lot of, a lot of stats and a lot of points, and it's not getting any easier for people on those waitlists. So again, I think it's something that is sort of maybe, it's maybe a benchmark for this term of Gray County Council, and something that, you know, you know, time goes on, and historical wise, you know, it could be, you know, I know it's dollars and cents that we all are accountable as far as county council representatives and our lower tier, it goes back to, there's only one taxpayer and that type of thing. But you know what? It could be something to be said that, you know what? Those guys did something, you know, they, you know, they put something in order, and it's similar to what we have did in the past with regards to, as mentioned already before, with regards to putting money aside for asset management. We have, you know, in the past, put money aside for healthcare spending, and, you know, we continue to have those priorities, and it's almost like a little bit of a sizable plan in the sense of achieving of where this, where we're going. So anyway, I just wanted, I just wanted to make those comments, Mister, Mister Warden, and I think it's, everybody has put a lot into this. Put this committee together last year, and it was supported by county council, and we moved forward and brought a lot of good information, and here we are. And I just, I look at councillor O'Leary, and I hope he puts a smile on his face. Because he has raised a, got him. Thank you, Mister Warden.
Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. Is there anyone else that you saw, Madam Clerk? No. So we have had, I think, very good discussion, and this is a very big move for us. So with that said, I'm going to call the question, is there anyone opposed to the motion? Seeing none, congratulations. That is, that is carried. That's awesome. Okay, next item, I guess we go from B to D, right? The Agricultural Advisory Committee Minutes. I believe that the deputy warden is the one who asked that that one be pulled, correct?
Yes, I did. I'll move that, I'll move that.
Thank you. I'm now looking for a seconder. I'm going to say councillor Gamble. So Deputy Warden, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Warden. The reason I raise this is no other, it's just great, it's moving forward, fantastic. I've got some comments back from committee members that are really enthused and happy it's there, and everybody is at the table, you know, with really good intentions of moving forward with a lot of great stuff. The reason I raise it, Mister Warden, is there was a letter that came forward, I think, last summer from Gray Federation of Ag with regards to protein processing and expanding. And I know that it was forwarded to the county, but it was sort of left in abeyance until the Agriculture Advisory Committee was sort of up and running. So I don't know if that, I do have an OFA meeting, a Gray Federation meeting tonight, whether that needs to be resubmitted or not at all. I remember having a conversation with the CAO about that. It was sort of held in abeyance because it was really, that was felt the best form to bring that forward. So are there other items that need to be come forward? I guess is that, do they need to come to county council to, or do they need to come to staff? How do, other items that was to be followed up on that agenda need to follow? But I wanted to raise that one part because I know it was sort of held. Maybe, maybe the CAO can, or somebody else can follow up with it. Thank you.
Madam CAO?
Yeah, through you, Mister Warden. Our Agricultural Economic Development Officer, Philly Markowitz, has been engaged in several discussions regarding the processing facilities, as have, I think, some working group of Western Wardens. So now that the committee has had their inaugural meeting, I think we're in a position to get a report back to this committee to update them on all of those activities and get their input on where we might exert further influence, perhaps.
And I just want to follow up with that, Mister Warden. Thanks, thanks for that. And I can convey that back to the meeting tonight, and, and that's good. Just, just, I just wanted to follow up on that loop because of now the committee's in place, I can communicate that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on these minutes? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on approving the Agricultural Advisory Committee Minutes of December 17th. Is there anyone opposed? And that's approved. Thank you very much. So that's a check. That's D. I guess go from D to G, right? West Gray Correspondence regarding accessible vehicles. Councillor Robinson, I believe you asked that that one be pulled. So are you prepared to move?
Oh, most definitely.
And I'm looking for a seconder. Councillor Carlton, thank you. And councillor Robinson, you have the floor.
Yes, and thank you, Mister Warden. I certainly wanted this item pulled, this piece of correspondence from the municipality of West Gray, certainly just to highlight the fact that it was on consent and to just bring attention to the information in the letter. And certainly, members of county council will know that West Gray has an accessibility committee that reviews and advises on local accessible issues. West Gray is also a member municipality of the Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, where this group is dedicated to removing barriers to municipal government and advocates to accessible building spaces across county, and recognizing Gray County in our strategic plan speaks to removing barriers and improving accessibility. This really is just a positive correspondence being brought forward. Certainly on behalf of the West Gray Local Advisory Accessibility Advisory Committee, the recommendation had been approved by West Gray Council, which is recommend to West Gray Council that council tries to ensure that the Gray County Flesherton to Waukerton routes uses accessible buses. That was approved by West Gray Council and forwarded here to the attention of Gray County. We, Gray County Council, certainly we support all of Gray County's initiatives in bringing forward a GTR and the route for Gray Road 4, and this is just to support it, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Who's the appropriate person to turn to? Is there any comment to be made by any staff?
Stephanie is available if you want her to.
Stephanie, is there anything that you wish to add to this?
Thank you, Warden McQueen. So through you, yes, the correspondence is received, and as discussed previously, we are going to continue on working on a strategy to ensure that all of our conventional transit vehicles will be accessible in the future. It is a goal that we are working towards, but as discussed, at this time, it is not feasible and plausible. So we are partnering with our specialized transit agencies to offer a conventional transit parallel service. And to note, I will be attending the SMART board meeting in the near future with our CAO to meet with SMART as well, so we can discuss options with working with both of our specialized transit providers.
Very good.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I think those are all good comments. I would say we have to walk before we run. We're still very much babies at this, and certainly, I think, full accessibility is ultimately the goal. Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Warden Hicks, and through you to councillor Robinson. Just a question about, is this not pure duplication when Westbury is part of SMART mobility that we would have another specialized mobility transit running through?
Stephanie?
Oh, no.
Well, I'm not sure who, Mister Warden, to address that to, but to me, it seems like duplication, and we're trying to remove duplication. Thank you.
Mister Warden?
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you, Your Sheriff. So just to be clear, what SMART does is specialized transit, and what we are offering is conventional transit. So a good example would be larger transit agencies such as the TTC, Brampton Transit, Mississauga Transit. Their buses, if an individual in a wheelchair is at a stop, they can get on that bus and at that stop, get off at another stop. If they need more services, they can book a different ride with Wheel Trans, for example, with the TTC, and pick them up at their home and bring them directly to a hospital appointment. So essentially, we're doing the exact same thing. So specialized transit in Gray County is offered by Mifred Moves, SMART, HTSS. We are simply offering conventional transit where an individual who requires mobility services could be at one of our stops and get on the bus, just like everybody else. It's not duplication of services, they are very different.
Anything to add to that, councillor Robinson?
Yes, thank you. I was just typing in the chat to comment, so thank you for your quick response. Yes, I completely have that understanding of what our transit manager, Stephanie Stewart, says, and she certainly has presented the information to Gray County, or rather, to West Gray Council. There is a difference between the conventional and the specialized service. And this certainly is a comment with regard to, as the county continues to evolve and the GTR is matures in its service delivery, it is just a consideration to be, to be put in place for accessible buses. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands, Madam Clerk. So with that, I'm going to call the question. Oh, I see councillor Trumpus. You just squeaked in there.
Just squeaked in, sorry for that. Thanks so much, Mister Warden. And I just want to support the notion of accessible transportation across the county. This is very important to our accessibility committee as well, has, and has been a concern, as Stephanie knows. And we're very, very happy that this is being considered in the future iterations of the cross-county transportation. cross-county transportation system. But it is important, from an accessibility perspective, that there is no differentiation. It isn't a specialized service that is provided for some folks, but that transportation should be available to each and every person with regard to their needs, special needs or otherwise. And that's why our Accessibility Committee, too, is, is very excited about moving this whole issue forward. We do have and very much appreciate Miford Moves, and that is, is kind of a one-off. It doesn't travel the length and breadth of Gray County. It is, it has a restricted motion into Owen Sound and Thornbury. But when the county's expanded county service is available, we are looking forward to the day when it will be accessible. And I know that this is going to take time. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Mackey.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, for delaying the process, but I completely agree with Counselor Trumpus' comments in regards to specialized mobility across Gray County. And I really think County Council seriously needs to look at reducing the fragmentation that we currently have. So I look forward to the opportunity when we can have a countywide transit system that's not a duplicate system. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? We've had good discussion, I think. I think we're ready to call the question. So on approval of the motion, anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much, folks. Okay, so we are now moving to, I believe, item I, 5I, correspondence from Bruce Creek Farm on this, with respect to the cell towers. I think it's in the town of Blue Mountains, correct? Okay, so that was pulled by whom, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Soever.
Counselor Soever. So Counselor Soever, are you prepared to move?
Yes.
And I'm looking for a seconder. I saw Counsel Robinson's hand. So Counselor Soever, you have the floor.
Yes. So this is correspondence from the Events for Life on, with regard to the application that's been made to put a cell tower on adjacent property very close to their facility. Now, the the Events for Life, they provide a number of programs for people with disabilities that, once they've graduated high school. And, you know, these are, are young adults, and they do a really great job at this. They serve not only the town of Blue Mountains, but people in Miford, Owen Sound, and other parts of Gray County, as well as Collingwood. So they, they have staff and, and over 30 volunteers. They have a waiting list right now. And, you know, this Events for Life is a great program. Now, the issue with this cell tower is that the Beaver Creek Farm is actually owned by an individual that allows them to use this, Michael Hutchins. And he, there is a concern there that, you know, there is conflicting information on the effects of radiation from cell towers. But all of the studies have been done on, you know, healthy individuals. Some of the individuals in this program have those cochlear implants, which can be affected by radio waves, I'm told. We don't really have, our staff is looking into this at, at the town level, this application. And so this application, if it's, it's allowed to go through, would, you know, end up with Events for Life losing their facility, because the owner doesn't want to be, have the liability, potential liability if any of the participants, you know, suffer damage, because they do have these cochlear implants and other medical devices that some of them have. There isn't a lot of information. I've tried to do some research myself on that. And, you know, the, the effects of radiation on these towers are considered to be minimal, but that's in, without, you know, nobody's really looked at, that I could find anyway on the internet. Nobody's really looked at the impact on people with these specialized medical devices and what that might be. So I think the, the owner, Michael Hutchins', concerns are, you know, since there's no information and there is some potential, maybe his concerns are valid. And my question in pulling this was to county staff, is what is the county's role in permitting these cell towers?
Randy, Randy Scherzer. Randy.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I can speak to some of that. So we do have some policies in our county official plan. Ultimately, at the end of the day, if there's any conflicts or resolution with respect to any challenges or concerns with respect to the siding of cell towers, the, the decision rests with Industry Canada. But we do have new policies that we included in our new official plan with respect to the siding of cell towers. And some of them are with respect to law creation, recommending that there be no law creation, that these be done through easements and right of ways. And we do encourage municipalities to work with Industry Canada to develop telecommunication tower siding protocols. And we have some criterias and policies, or suggestive policies, in our county official plan policies with respect to siding. One of them is preferring a minimum 250-meter setback from all residential zones and dwellings wherever possible. So that provides a bit of an, you know, I guess, a distance between, preferred distance anyways, between where we locate these cell towers and existing residential dwellings. We do have some other policies in there, suggestive policies when developing these, these protocols. But for the most part, our policies are fairly general. We do provide comments back to the local municipality, and we have done so with respect to these two. We did note that there was some natural heritage considerations, and if it would land, and other things that need to be addressed, and recommending Conservation Authority review and comments on some of that. But primarily, you know, we're recommending to municipalities to, to develop these tower siding protocols in accordance with the Industry Canada standards.
Thank you.
I did see Counsel Potter's hand up.
Thank you, through your, Mr. Warden. There does seem to be some confusion around this, as I'm sure Randy knows, where Mr. Hutchings, in fact, wrote to or called our M P, Terry Dowdell, and was told, oh, it's totally up to the local municipality. I know that in the past, I have always been told on several occasions that it's up to the CRTC and the federal government, and that we might be invited to comment, but they don't even have to pay any attention to our comments. So I would like to have that clarified. So I thank Randy for, for helping us with that. But this is a very important facility. It is not easy for them to just pick up and move. And especially with the people they serve, any changes can be difficult, even traumatic. So it's, it's well-supported within our community and within neighboring communities as well. So I, I think that, you know, obviously, we have to listen to all the evidence before we make up our minds. But I, I don't want to fool with this. If, if there's a chance that it will cause problems for Events for Life, then I think another location would be a better idea. And if it is, I, I still would like to have some real clarification on whether Mr. Hutchings, the information he got from the M P was, was correct, or whether we do, in fact, have the final say. So if we do, it kind of makes it easy. But I, I just wanted the council and staff to understand that this is a very important facility, and, and it serves a very, a very important clientele, local families. And I hear all the time about, and I've supported it myself with donations and, and participating in some of their fundraisers. So I have a big Canadian flag up behind me on my, in my dining room that came from, from them. So it is, it is a great operation, and we should support it and, and by all means, keep it local.
You are on mute, Mr. Warden.
I should learn, huh? My apologies. I was gonna say, does Randy want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, the Industry Canada, so if a municipality doesn't have a consultation protocol in place, the, the, anyone who is proposing a cell tower has to still follow the Industry, Industry Canada's consultation protocol by default. And that does require notifying, obviously, the Land Use Planning Authority, also looking at, you know, consultation, public meeting requirements, et cetera. And, you know, in the end, it encourages the, to get local municipal support or, or concurrence with respect to the siding. And to take into consideration any policies that may exist with respect to land use planning documents as well. Like I said, though, at the end of the day, you know, and it does indicate that 99% of the time, you can work through some of the, some of any concerns that are identified. They do know, though, at the end of the day, I think it's Industry Canada that can make the final decision on, on, on siding those cell towers. But they have made some positive changes to try to at least engage, gauge the community and look for at least that local municipal concurrence or support in order to move forward. But as I mentioned, it's the final say at the end of the day is, is by the federal government.
Thank you, Sarah. I think I saw Counselor Mackey, right?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Warden. And, you know, in light of the information that's been provided to council today, I'm just wondering if there would be some benefit if the county, you know, sent a letter of support for Blue Mountains to look at repositioning, you know, this cell tower to another location that wouldn't potentially cause conflict with the, the property in question. Thank you.
Randy?
Yeah, we'd be happy. We've provided some preliminary comments as part of pre-submission consultation that was provided by the town, but we're happy to follow up with any further comments and to cite some of the policies that we have in our official plan, which encourages things like, as I mentioned, the, the 250-meter setback from, from residential dwellings, et cetera. And just to kind of reinforce some of those policies that we encourage be considered when siding cell towers. So that may help to provide some further information back to Town Council when deciding on whether or not they agree with what the proposal is for the cell tower, or if they disagree, and then can work with the person who's trying to construct the cell tower to maybe relocate it or to re-site it somewhere else.
Thank you. I don't see any others, their hands up. Are we all satisfied? Mover and seconder, good to go? Counselor Soever? You're muted.
I would be happy to. Is that a motion that you made, an amendment, Mr. Mackey? And I'd be happy to second that.
I'm not sure, Madam Clerk. Maybe I'll turn to, I see your hand up. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I think it's part of the planning process. So I think our planning staff can provide subsequent comments back after the discussion from today's meeting.
I don't think a motion is, a motion is necessary. So then, if it's okay with everyone, I'll call the question on the, on the main motion, if I may. Is there anyone opposed to the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna say that that is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're turning, we're gonna skip J and go to K, which is the award of the two tandem trucks. Can't remember, Madam Clerk, who moved that one?
Counselor McQueen.
That was McQueen, okay. So Deputy Warden McQueen, are you prepared to move this?
Absolutely, for sure.
And then I'm looking for a seconder, moved, seconded by Counselor Mill. And Deputy Warden, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm just pulling it up here, Mr. Warden. And, yeah, I certainly have full support of the recommendations. The only question I had was going back to item, right above the list of the three individuals that had tendered. It says here, "The appropriate reserve bids are placed on each of the tandem trucks when offered for sale." And I guess my question through you, Mr. Warden, to the Director of Transportation, do we still offer it out to the lower tiers first before we, before we do provide it to the public or through auction? And I know that was a practice we did in the past, just in case that a lower tier, and it was more as a general piece of equipment, not necessarily tandem trucks, this one became surplus. I guess that was the question that I was asking to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I don't know if Sharon is with us.
I can answer that, Mr. Warden.
Okay, go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, we do still offer that to lower tier when Marty kind of sets the reserve bid. And if someone's willing to meet that, then yes, we'll offer it to the lower tiers, yeah.
So just to follow up, Mr. and Mr. Warden. So does that get, is that circulating? Like, I guess my question is, is it sent out to the lower tiers in an email? I know it used to be just so everybody is aware of the piece of equipment. Like, obviously, it is available, but how do you, how do you, how do you notify them? And do you send it like a, a list of equipment that's coming up periodically throughout the time, and then it gets sent out, or it gets sent to the director? Or how does, how does, how does that work? I just?
I, I think purchasing notifies them. I'm just not sure exactly if that's through Bonfire, or I see I'm getting stuff from Mike Aldwire here, but I'm a little behind on it. But I'll find out that answer. But, okay. He says, Mike Aldwire says, "We notify the C O and transportation directors." So purchasing does that. Mike does.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good. Just thanks for that clarity. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. That's, that was my big part. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions on this item? If there are not, then I'm gonna call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion? Seeing none, that is carried as well. So, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna maybe turn to you, but we need to, going to closed session. But I'm just wondering if, how people are feeling. We're approaching noon. It might be a good time for us to take a short break and then come back and go into closed session. Do we do that now and then adjourn, or do, should we adjourn and then come back and go into closed session?
No, we should be moving forward with the meeting and adjourn when all the business is complete. And we can certainly, Mr. Warden, have some open discussion first, so that when we go into close, we are only speaking about those two items in there. If there is general discussion on the correspondence, that needs to be done in open session. So it's up to the will of council whether we wish to have a break now or not.
So what is the wish of council? Do we want to take a break and then come at this one? I sense it's gonna be a fairly good discussion. Counselor Mill?
Just some clarification. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Why the need to go into closed session? I'm, I'm not clear on that.
So perhaps I will turn to either our C O or perhaps legal counsel, Mr. Letourneau.
I can, if I can say, Mr. Warden, should council wish to consider taking any further steps in this matter? I think that Mr. Letourneau can provide some comment to council to assist them in, in that decision-making.
Perhaps my recommendation, I suppose, and Madam Clerk, you can let me know whether this is appropriate. We could have a general discussion. If it appears that we are going into things that really we ought to be getting some legal advice about, or it's appropriate for Mr. Letourneau to give us some advice about, perhaps that's the time that we can say, oh, we're getting into a territory and we now need to go in closed session. Would that be appropriate, that we have that general discussion and just see, maybe we don't need to go into closed session?
You're absolutely correct, Warden Hicks. There are, there's certainly some open discussion that can take place on this piece of correspondence. And it is definitely council's determination on whether we end up going into closed session or not.
Okay. So why don't we, let's go back to the question of whether people need a break, or whether you want to go into that open discussion. People needing a break, just not People needing a break, just nod your head. If not, I will proceed on. I see a few nods, so why don't we take a break? I'm gonna say we're gonna take a nice little 10 minutes. So could we come back at 10 past noon? Would that be appropriate? Everyone happy with that? I see a lot of nods. Excellent. Okay, so with that said, we'll take a break now. Come back at 10 past noon.
Thank you. Videos and cameras, or mics and cameras off.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Staff see me and I get drawn in. Okay, Madam Clerk, it looks like we have most people here, still waiting for Councilor Robinson. Gambles, whoever, we got a few out there still. Maybe we'll just give it a few more seconds. We do have a quorum though, right, Madam Clerk, yes?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay. You know what, maybe we'll get started and I know that others will join in. So did we get the mover already for this? No. So moved by Councilor Desai and seconded by the Council of Woodbury. Put the siding on the floor. And who was it that wanted to speak to it primarily?
Councilor Desai pulled it.
Okay. Excellent. Councilor Desai, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Warden. Thanks. The reason I brought this up is in the past year, we have supported or sorry, we have passed a resolution at committee and ratified a council to oppose the amendment that is being proposed by the township of Clearview. And I would like for us to continue to oppose the amendment that they're trying to apply for, which is why I've pulled this out. Procedure really, I'm not sure if I'd have to move an amendment or if I would have to if it would just be recorded that we
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. So right off the bat, I think we're crossing that line where we probably need to this, this is what I wanted to investigate is whether or not we could avoid going into closed session. If that is the case, then my sense is that we do need to go into closed session to get some legal advice.
Mr. Warden?
Yes? Go ahead.
Sorry, I wonder if it's helpful if we start off by Randy, are you able to just explain to council what it is that we're looking at here?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that if that's the wish of council for sure. Just to provide a bit of background information because it has been a while since this matter has been before council for discussion. So just provide a bit of an overview of of this, this matter. So this in 2019, the county received a Niagara Scarpment Plan Amendment application that proposed upgrades to side road 2627 in Clearview Township. And part of the reason for the upgrades to side road 2627 has been triggered as a result of the future closure of a section of Simcoe Road 91, which connects with Gray Road 31, Simcoe Road 95. And I should see if I have the ability to share my screen. And just to show kind of a map if I can. Can everyone see that?
Yes, Randy.
Okay, it's just a map. I apologize if it's, if it's very small print, but I'll try and point out the significant sections. So just to orient council, this is Gray Road 31 is here, you know, it bends. This is obviously a boundary road between Gray County and Simcoe County is on the east side of Gray Road 31. This is Gray Road 120 or Simcoe Road 124, sorry. Dunshune is located here. Singh Hampton is located to the south here. So Simcoe Road 91 is connects between Gray Road 31 and Dunshune as well as connects, of course, to Gray Road 124. And, and so the, it's the intent of, so the closure of Simcoe Road 91 is based on an agreement that was made between Simcoe County, Clearview Township and Walker Industries as part of the expansion to the Dunsheen Quarry in Clearview Township. So Dunsheen Quarry, they have an existing quarry south of 91. They now have based on the approval that they received from a joint board, they now have a new quarry site on the north side of 91. So the, the agreement that was reached between Simcoe, Clearview and Walkers was to sell this, transfer this section of Simcoe right, Road 91 to Walkers. And then there would be a series of upgrades then triggered to, to existing roads that is under the jurisdiction of Clearview Township. That being part of 10th 10th North, not a saga, as well as a side road 2627. So this is the, the road highlighted in blue is, is the basically the, the matter that's before the or was before the Niagara Scarpment Commission as part of the Niagara Scarpment Plan Amendment and has now been referred to the Niagara Scarpment Hearing Office. So I'll just provide a bit more context in terms of the intent of that. So Simcoe County, as I mentioned, will transfer Simcoe Road 91 to Clearview Township. Clearview Township, and this is the agreement between the, those three parties. Clearview Township will, will sell the section of Simcoe Road 91 from Gray Road 31 to concession 10 to Walkers. Clearview Township will upgrade that, that section as I mentioned. And then Clearview Township will upgrade side road 2627 from a seasonally maintained road to an all season road to replace essentially the county road. This road would only be surface treated with a 400 vehicle per day traffic volume count. If, if 400 vehicle per day traffic volume kind of has been achieved. And then I think the agreement also notes that Clearview Township will restrict large vehicles from using that road as well. So it should be noted that, as I mentioned, Dunsheen Quarry went through a lengthy joint board process and, and the joint board did approve the quarry expansion, as I mentioned, on the north side of 91 in 2012. Gray County was involved in the review of the Dunsheen Quarry expansion and I don't some councils may recall there, at the same time, there was also a quarry proposal, the MEQ Quarry Proposal, which was on the west side of Gray Road 31. And we actually had them do, we had joint peer viewers looking at hydrogeology and a number of matters just because they were such close proximity to one another, wanted to make sure that cumulatively the impacts were being addressed. Gray County was involved in the review as well as with respect to the proposed closure of Simcoe Run 91 and the subsequent upgrades to side road 2627. And based on the arrangement made by Simcoe County, Clearview Township and Walkers regarding the closure of Simcoe Road 91 and Gray County's interest in the, and subsequent upgrades to 2627 to maintain these road connection in this part of the county. Gray County entered into agreement with Clearview Township and Walkers in 2010 regarding the work to be undertaken on that, that road section that's highlighted in blue there. This agreement states basically that Clearview Township will completed traffic survey of side road 2627 annually. Two years after the issuance of the license to Walker aggregates, Clearview Township will surface treat side road 2627, provided the traffic count is 400 vehicles per day or in such year, the traffic study substantiates the traffic volumes are 400 vehicles per day. And then Clearview Township will adopt a bylaw which would restrict truck traffic and low restrictions on side road 2627 year round. So Clearview Township has been seeking the necessary approvals to move forward with the upgrades to this side road 2627 since 2012. The Clearview Township applied for a developer permit application to upgrade this side road and that application was refused by the NEC in November 2015 and was subsequently appealed by Clearview Township. During the appeal, that appeal process, additional environmental work was undertaken by Clearview Township, which identified that the proposed road works would result in the removal of 1.2 hectares of natural heritage features and key hydrologic features within the existing right of way. So the township requested an adjournment to that hearing of the development permit application to apply for a Niagara Scarpment Plan Amendment as the policies of the NEP permit or prohibit development in wetlands. So county staff presented a report back in 2019, which provided background information regarding this matter and noted that staff would be reviewing the proposed NEPA and would be providing technical comments to the commission. As part of that discussion, council passed a motion requesting the township of Clearview complete an appropriate level municipal class C environmental assessment process for the proposed reconstruction of side road 2627. Comments were then provided to NEC on May 30th, 2018, which included the amended motion as directed by council. And Clearview's consultant then provided a response document which responded to the comments the NEC received regarding the proposed NEPA, including the comments provided by the county. And Clearview has noted that they have confirmed with the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks that the appropriate EA classification was utilized by Clearview Township. Back in May 2020, the NEC asked if there were any further comments to submit those prior to June 8th and also indicate whether council was in support of or opposed to the proposed Niagara Scarpment Plan Amendment. And based on the presentation that was provided, staff at that time, staff had noted that, given the fact that the Dunsheen Quarry has already been approved by the joint board, that Simcoe County is, as the road authority for Simcoe Road 91, decided to transfer a portion of, of that road to Clearview Township and in turn, Clearview will sell a portion to Walkers as outlined in the agreement between those parties. And then Gray County has already entered into an agreement with Clearview Township and Walkers regarding the upgrades to side road 2627, which is the focus of this Niagara Scarpment Plan application. And then ultimately, it's up to the road authority to determine the appropriate EA classification for the project, which in this case, of course, is Clearview Township and their consultant, as I mentioned, has confirmed that the Schedule A plus was the appropriate municipal class EA level, which as I mentioned, has been confirmed by the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks. And that regardless of the connection of Simcoe Road 91 closure, road authorities have the ability and responsibility to pursue upgrades to roads under their jurisdiction to address any existing deficiencies. So for those reasons, staff recommended that a response be provided to the NEC indicating that the county has no further comments with respect to the NEPA. As long as any potential environmental impacts are mitigated. Based on that discussion, council decided it approved a motion basically to reiterate its position back in 2019 with respect to still about the concerns regarding the appropriate municipal class EA that was conducted. And, and as Councilor Desai indicated, that County Gray opposed this proposed amendment to the Niagara Scarpment Plan. And that motion and letter was sent then to the Niagara Scarpment Commission. The Niagara Scarpment Commission has decided to not approve the Niagara Scarpment Plan Amendment. And based on that, this matter has now been referred to the Niagara Scarpment Hearing Office with a pre-hearing schedule for February 24th, which is why we posted this notice as part of the council committee whole agenda, which brings us basically up to date in terms of what has happened over the last couple of years. Sorry for that long-winded update.
You are on mute, Mr. Warden. Mr. Warden, you are on mute.
I'm very sorry. I was gonna say I saw Councilor Whoever with his hand up.
Lack of lunch, that's what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Randy, for that extensive summary of what's gone on to date. I'd like to advise the council that certainly we are opposing this as well as the Town of Blue Mountains and the Town of Blue Mountains authorized me to give a deputation to the Niagara Scarpment Commission on their hearing of, I believe it was October 29th of this year. We did highlight the traffic concerns. I would note a lot of the information that Randy's given us, you know, about the 400 vehicles a day that, that, that may have been realistic 10 years ago in 2009 when this thing first started. Recent traffic information, as I told the Escarpment Commission, we are unable to do traffic studies and there are no up-to-date traffic counts on that County Road 91 because I'm sure the proponent doesn't want to do them. And in fact, I'll, I'll talk a bit that about a little bit later. Because that was confirmed to me yesterday in a call I had with Mr. Measures. The traffic counts, as best we can figure them out from the county traffic counts on County Road 31 on our side of the boundary. And depending on how many vehicles turn off onto 91, you come up with a range of between 1,300 vehicles and 3,300 vehicles a day. So the 400 is long in the past. It has little relevance today. And just in the last year, the traffic on north of the intersection went up by 22% and south of the intersection went up by 9%. So that, that's an indication that a lot of people are turning to 91 as an east-west route to get from the Gray County to Berry and, and to the west of us. People are load now to use Highway 26 to go through Collingwood because of the traffic congestion there. And, and this has become a very important alternate route. That's the case I made to the Niagara Scarpment Commission. There was a lot of questions and discussion on that and certainly Duncan McKinley, who's a member, pointed out to the commission that this is only one of four east-west routes out of Gray County to the west. Other than like minimal side roads, certainly we have Highway 26, which we now have new traffic data on, traffic has gone up about 41% there since 2016, based on our counts from this year. So you can see the huge amounts of traffic that are increasing. And so I think we shouldn't be shutting down alternate routes. We should be maintaining them as best we can. To that, I've also had discussions and got to know many of the opponents. And I've communicated with Mayor Measures on this and there, there seems to be an appetite to at least enter into some kind of discussion on potential alternate routes. And I don't want to get too much into that because that would, you know, be a matter for closed session because it involves positions, plans or procedures and instruction with regard to a strategy on this, which under Section 239 2K of the Municipal Act is a matter for closed session discussion.
Okay, were there any other hands, Madam Clerk?
Deputy Warden McLean.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and not to label this too much because if we're, if we're going to go into camera, there could be a number of things that will come up in that process. But I will say that certainly Gray Highlands has also been opposed to this right from the very beginning. We never did sign an agreement. We were asked to and we, you know, adamantly opposed this whole idea of rerouting a major corridor that leaves and enters Gray and Simcoe Counties. And there was also was a report back early in the 2000s from Gray County that was in place that was aligning, that aligned those roads because at the time, 31 never aligned with County Road, Simcoe County Road 91. And that changed, I think it was back when the days of Larry Miller was Warden. And there was discussions between Simcoe and Gray to enter into an understanding that the alignment was to happen to move traffic both from both counties. And I think about 2004, the, the roads were assumed because the particular road 31 was not a county road at the time. And they assumed that road from Gray Highlands and proceeded to construct and line those roads up with Simcoe County and again, Simcoe County 91 and South of Singh Hampton. So there was certainly a huge investment from Gray County, a huge intent of aligning and moving traffic as we see today is just to iterate the comments from Mayor Whoever that when 26, the summer was greatly reduced from, I'm not sure what the current speed limit is, but when it was reduced to 50 kilometers, certainly Gray County staff had did those traffic counts and it was a feeling that certainly the increased traffic numbers on those two areas where they certainly had traffic counters on both north and south side of the entrance into Clearview from Gray County and Simcoe County that, you know, those counts were, were up. And obviously because of when you greatly reduce Highway 26, that takes you from Collingwood to Thornbury to Mewford. We had lots of complaints about how slow it was and people were definitely at that time even further looking for alternate routes of, of commuting across the Escarpment. The other thing we'll say is when I did get to the commission meeting in October, there was a number of delegations that did speak. And certainly I will echo that the comments of the past Warden from Gray County, who is now a commission member, certainly did speak about his concern with regards to that limited access across the Escarpment. But even more importantly, some of the other commission members who aren't that familiar, but certainly did their homework suggested that, well, if this amendment was, was approved and you're, you're closing down a major corridor and it was determined even at the time of 2009, 10, that this road could have up to 1,000 cars a day on it. Does that mean that this amendment was approved and the current road was closed? Then are you going to be coming back with another amendment needing to upgrade that road because of the huge traffic issues that are going to be incurred on that particular corridor? And so you know, that was a huge question. That was sort of like, why are you going backwards versus forwards in the sense of a major corridor? And that was just from a commissioner in the sense of just looking at it objectively. The only other comment I will make at this time, Mr. Warden, is two other comments. One is it is, I think Randy said in his report, it restricts commercial transportation of, of or just anything to do with commercial vehicle movement on that particular road. Well, we do have a large number of businesses that do come from Gray County that do service and we know the Collingwood, Wasaga Beach, Stainer area is a huge market. And to, to subject a particular road that is a major corridor to restrict commercial, not only for the aggregate or other business entities that are related to that, but also agriculture. Again, which is a, which is also going to be restricted from, to a certain degree from that road. So those are, those are issues that I think has huge, huge concern, I think should have huge concern from Gray County itself and, and the movement. We don't have, we don't put up borders, we don't put up fences as we don't do that kind of stuff. We, we keep our, you know, commerce supposed to be moving freely from one county to another. The only other one comment I will make is, Mr. Warden, is sir, this agreement was discussed and, and, and entered into in 2009. Sir, in 2010, while we're 10, 11 years later, traffic has not decreased. We know the growth of Gray County has greatly increased. Blue Mountains specifically have has greatly increased in, in growth. And where do those individuals come from? They come from the south. So can't come from the north because there's a big body of water there. So you know, those corridors are getting more congested all the time. And to suggest that you're going to restrict those, it's just, it's going the wrong way. So I know that, I forget the wording when those agreements were entered into, but it doesn't bind future counselors or sort of future counselor councils to those agreements. And I forget the wording. There's a certain word and I just can't think of it. It's maybe somebody else can help me out there, but it doesn't bind. It's not, it's in that agreement. It's not binding for future counselors councils to make those decisions. So when we move on, Mr. Warden, I will certainly be moving a motion to amend the motion that is on the floor that we as Gray County attend as participants at this particular hearing that's scheduled for the 24th. Thank you.
Okay, so I think with that in mind, I don't hear anything so far that tells me we need to go into closed session, but if that amendment is moved and seconded, then I would say at that point, we are going into closed session. But right now, we just have the current motion, which is to receive. And unless we want to vote on that or somebody wants to do something different, I will call the question on to receive.
So I'm moving that amendment, Mr. Warden, that we are a participant at this hearing. So I guess that's an amendment to the motion that's on the floor. And that could precipitate us going into camera if that's possibility. I don't know.
Okay. And is there a second to that motion to amend? Councilor Desai. Okay, then we do need to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, am I on the right track here?
I think so. I think council needs to hear from our solicitor, Director of Legal Services on this, so. On this, so. That would be my recommendation that we put a motion on the floor to move into close for Solicitor Client Privilege and litigation or potential litigation.
Very good. So could I get a mover for us to go into, sorry, Counselor Mackey, you're having a problem hearing? No, okay.
So, Mr. Warden, I was just gonna move, go into, go into close. Thank you.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Mackey. Is there a seconder, seconded by Counselor Patterson? That we go into closed session for Solicitor Client Privilege and for potential advice with respect to potential litigation? Is there anyone opposed to that motion? Seeing none, that's carried. And we'll have to take some time to advise and potential litigation purposes. And for no other purpose. So we are back now dealing with the amended motion. Just to remind everyone what that amended motion is, Madam Clerk, do you recite that for us?
Actually, Tara will have that and it is the amendment. And then if it passes, then we would vote on the main motion as amended.
Correct. And so the the amendment, I believe, was made by Counselor McQueen. And Tara, are you gonna read that or do you want me to summarize?
I can pull it up on my screen. It says that the motion be amended to state that the correspondence be received and that the County of Gray attend as a participant in the hearing.
Okay, so any further debate on the amended motion?
I see Counselor McQueen.
Counselor McQueen, go right ahead.
Mr. Warden, and just to iterate the movement, the amendment to this motion is, again, we made a decision. On the 23rd of May 2020 that we would not support the Niagara Skarman Amendment to the redevelopment of 2627 in Clearview. That was ratified in the June 4th council meeting of that direction. It has gone through the process. Before that, it came to county council on in May. I think the Director of Planning, Randy Switcher, brought a report to county council in May of 2000. May 9th, 2019 with a report. It was deferred. There was a public meeting held in the Feversham Community Center. And minutes were captured. There was then a follow-up meeting in in May. The date is May 23rd, sorry, it's sorry, May 23rd, 2019. Council then made a decision that it was going to ask for a Class C versus a Class A. So and then reiterating, it was May 28th, 2020 was then, we came back to county council when the amendment was being proposed. And that was the date that we, at the committee of the whole, didn't support the amendment. This is a hearing that's coming up on the 24th of February, a pre sort of a pre-hearing. I think it was a pre-hearing conference, so it's sort of determine who the parties and participants. I would suggest that we become a participant at that meeting, basically demonstrating our position. And echoing that position at that hearing. From that, this all goes back to terms of settlement agreement that was determined through Walker's aggregate. And with regards to closing of Simcoe County Road 91 and the reconstruction of 2627. That is tied, in my opinion, together with regards to that whole hearing and the reconstruction of 2627. Was part of that hearing decision. Certainly, the County of Gray certainly was in an agreement back in 2009, 10. That was in camera, that never came out for any public dialogue until actually it came out into the public with the signing of that. From that, we have gone 11 years. This is 2021. And a lot of things have changed, a lot of traffic has changed. And just the last comment I will make, Mr. Warden. The investment that Gray County did do back in the early 2000s to realign 31 with Simcoe County Road 91. I would, I will maybe follow up at a later time with the Director of Transportation to what initially that investment was. And so I feel that county council, in my opinion, should continue its position to. To defend its position with regards that the amendment not be supported at the Niagara Skarman Plan. And then they come back with a new agreement of how they're going to realign. Or continue the flow of traffic from Simcoe into Gray and vice versa. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Is there anyone else needing to speak on this before we call the vote? Counselor Mill and then Counselor Larry.
I simply want to ask for a recorded vote, Mr. Warden.
Okay. Counselor Larry.
Counselor Millen just covered it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Are we ready to? We're ready to vote. Looks like we're ready to call the question. And I'm gonna turn it over to you then, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I will note that Counselor Body did have to leave the meeting during the closed session, so he is not in attendance right now.
Okay.
Okay, so we are voting on the amendment, which is to become a participant in the hearing. Counselor Mackey.
No.
Counselor Gamble. Counselor Gamble.
You're muted.
Sorry, no, yes.
Sorry, was that a yes or or a no?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Counselor Burley.
No.
Counselor Carlton.
Opposed.
Counselor McQueen.
Yes.
Counselor Desai.
In favor.
Counselor Patterson.
Opposed.
Warden Hicks.
Nay.
Counselor Columbus.
Opposed.
Counselor Kivany.
Opposed.
Here, Counselor O'Leary.
Opposed.
Counselor Woodbury.
Opposed.
Counselor Millen.
Nay.
Counselor Soever.
In favor.
Counselor Potter.
In favor.
Counselor Robinson.
Opposed.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Opposed.
That motion is lost 26 to 56.
Okay, so we are now going to the main motion, I gather. Madam Clerk.
That is correct.
Which is to receive. And do we need to have any further discussion? I'm guessing not. So on the main motion to receive. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Okay, we are moving on to item 6E now, which is other business. And A is OGR, Ontario Good Roads Association delegation requests. Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm not aware of of any delegation requests that would be appropriate to put forward for OGR, but it's certainly. Open to any suggestions from council. Thank you.
Council, were there any suggestions? I see Counselor Potter.
Thank you. I think I propose to the situation, should we not have a delegation about regional transportation?
With respect, we are having a discussion with the Minister of Transportation at Roma.
Thank you.
The two conferences are so close together. I don't see anyone else with any suggestions, so we'll leave it then. We are not going to be making any requests. If something does, is there a timeline on this, Madam CAO?
January 22nd, so we do have another week if something should come to mind.
Okay, so we're all aware of that. Turning to item F then, any notices of motion? I do not see any. That leaves us with G, a motion for to adjourn, moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Mill. Anyone opposed to that? I guess not. We are all anxious to have our lunch, aren't we? It's 1:30. Thank you very much. Good debate, good meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thank you all staff. Thanks, Kim. Heather, thank you.